Thank you, it was a great day today. Seeing no other questions, we thank you again as Deputy Mayor. At this time, we would like to take a motion to resolve them to the committee of the House. All of the committee say aye. I oppose. It is carried.
President Davis, as I am the petitioner for this bill, will you take my seat? Thank you.
I have no problems in doing that. The treaty of the House is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council sits as a committee. Proposed ordinance are read by title only by City Clerk John Boyd. Reports are then verbally given by the chairperson of the council standing committee to wish the proposed ordinance to be sent for an advisory review and recognition. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member or area plan would be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation of a proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report and then formal presentation followed by a public hearing. Mr. Boyd, could you please give the reading, second reading, to the Bill seventeen fourteen?
Public hearing on Bill of the County Council of the City of South Bend, amended Chapter Five with the South Bend Municipal Code and its title. And the question went with a new Chapter Five entitled Responsible Animal and Pet Ownership, Care and Control Regulation, and amended Section Two dash two thirteen of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing schedule of ordinance and code violation.
Do we now take our motion for a substitute for the third?
Yes.
Second. All of the committee say aye. I oppose. It is carried. Now we look to hear a report from the Health and Public Safety Vice Chair.
Health and Public Safety met today and sends to the full council, no recommendation, so anxious to hear about it.
Thank you. Our council, go ahead.
President Davis, at this time, there were various amendments that were proposed both during the Health and Public Safety Committee meetings, as well as after the set of council members. And council, first this for council members, and Scott has talked about substitute pages to the third substitute bill, replacing page twelve twenty eight sixty four. For the benefit of the public, let's just briefly highlight it. We will note that the new language is in form, or fourth form. There have been amendments to the definition of pet history, eliminating what began as a public period, then was a monthly or thirty-sixth period, and now they're eliminated, all three kind of, they were heard. It also amends the definition of public nuisance. Originally, it had a time limit, how long the animal would be barking or whining, or fifty times in a twenty-five, twenty minutes, or an hour periods. That was then replaced with other languages, we are now going back to the original. The next, on page twenty-eight, what they're trying with regards to Section Five dash thirty-six, notification of injury caused by a motor vehicle, two dogs retired, it has now been limited to domestic pets, opposed to domestic animals per the definition, or a large wild animal, which may come out of a safety measure. And on page sixty-eight, there was a concern with regards to proposed regulations of horses that are lessed within the city limits, and again, Section Five dash one twenty-one limits, that the daily records would be limited to the time that the horse actually within the city limits, and also that any inspection of stables would be only those stables that are within the city limits. So with that, we ask the council to accept the amended pages twelve twenty eight sixty-four, third substitute bill.
Any other move?
Second.
All of the committee say aye. I oppose. It is carried. Anything else that we need to look at? Okay, thank you. At this time, we will have our presenter. Please state your name, address, and share your thoughts.
Thank you, President Davis. Valerie Shea, South Bend City Council, Third District, thirteen fourteen, East Lane Street North, South Bend. I appreciate the opportunity to present this bill. The council's message of the Pacers playing at eight has come through loud and clear. I will do my best to not be redundant with much of the information that we covered earlier today. For the purpose of record-keeping, I did read into the record earlier, Vice President Dieter, although he is not with us this evening, he did send a letter expressing his support for Bill, Third Substitute Bill seventeen fourteen, which is a matter of public record with the Also, earlier today, I did go over a timeline. As I mentioned, the process that the committee and I followed was very open and inclusive. We hosted a total of fourteen public meetings where all were invited and encouraged to attend. Likewise, in the three months since filing Bill seventeen fourteen, I have continued to reach out to the council and community members alike. The suggestions I have received from these meetings and discussions are reflected here in Substitute Bill number three. The bill before you has truly been a team effort. Many people have come together to share opinions, suggestions, and experience. Third Substitute Bill seventeen, as amended, is a bill that will serve our community well. The bill enhances community safety by empowering our animal control officers, it strengthens punishment for repeat offenders, and makes self-fends policies more humane and up-to-date. As you all know, I proudly support Bill thirty, Third Substitute Bill as amended seventeen fourteen. I proudly support this bill and hope that you will too. So, for the purpose of record-keeping, I've highlighted the timeline, which I shared with you all earlier today. This process began on April twenty-fifth of two thousand and thirteen, where the committee members and I met with the Health and Public Safety Committee under Councilwoman White's leadership to share our goals for this rewrite. On May thirteenth of last year, the council approved the special committee, and between that time and the end of last year, our committee had fourteen public meetings. There've been a number of public discussions that have taken place, and I've highlighted them here. And I also want to thank our colleagues in the media. The media has done a wonderful job of keeping the community apprised of this bill. So, my thanks to our media partners as well. It's been a real public process. With all of that said, on May twenty-first of this year, the Third Substitute Bill was filed with the Speaker's Office, reflecting the changes and suggestions that have been received from council and community. So, I want to thank you, and I want to thank the community for coming together. This has been a real labor of love for us. So, just providing you all with an overview of the Third Substitute Bill seventeen fourteen. I first feel that we need to thank the citizen members of the special committee who devoted twelve months and hundreds of hours of their time to crafting this bill. So if I may ask, the members of the special committee, if you would all please stand, if you would all please stand, and, um... Thank you so much for your time. So, pet ownership is a significant quality of life issue for an estimated sixty-seven percent of our residents. Likewise, irresponsible pet ownership can have a negative impact on a community's quality of life. Substitute Bill, Third Substitute Bill seventeen fourteen enhances neighborhood health and safety by empowering animal control officers, it strengthens punishment for repeat offenders, and it makes our policies more humane and up-to-date. So, as I had said earlier, there's a lot of great information contained in this bill, but for the sake of time, we'll focus just on the core policy changes. We're going to talk about the dangerous dog laws, we're going to look at the anti-tethering language, we're going to look at pet limits and licensing, we're going to talk about the addition of the habitual animal offender category, we're going to look at the trap-neuter return policies, and finally, we're going to talk about the changes that have been made to the impoundment and reclaim procedures. So first, we're going to look at the dangerous dog laws, and I think dangerous dog laws can be very confusing for many, so we're going to break it down to the basics. Dangerous dog laws, or DDLs, have two parts. First, you have your definitions, or how we as a community are defining what a dangerous animal is, and then second, you have your regulations that owners of those animals must abide by. In the new ordinance, the definitions include that of a potentially dangerous animal, which is defined as an animal when unprovoked requires a person to take defensive action to prevent harm on two occasions over a one-year period. This point has been amended this evening, and it would be two occasions over a non-defined period of time, per Dr. Brenner's suggestion. Or an animal when unprovoked bites a person, causing an injury that is not serious or severe. Now, the other definition is that of a vicious animal, and this is an animal when unprovoked causes a serious or severe injury, or an animal that was previously determined to be potentially dangerous, but the owner continues to permit the potentially dangerous behavior. So first and foremost, I want to highlight that this new ordinance truly empowers our animal control officers to take the actions necessary to protect public health and safety. I will read to you three sections of section five-three-eight, that really emphasizes that point. So if upon investigation, an animal presents an immediate threat to public safety, our animal control officers can seize the animal on-site and impound the animal. The second point that I want to share is an amendment that was made after a meeting that I had had with Councilman Fred Furlik, to just tighten up the bill and make sure that public safety is first and foremost. We added the language, "Due to the overriding public health and safety concerns of a potentially dangerous animal, the provisions of this section are purposely intended to be reasonable yet more restrictive. If a conflict arises, the provisions of this section shall prevail due to public health and safety concerns." And last but not least, an animal that has been determined to be vicious shall be euthanized when the Animal Control Commission determines that the animal's release threatens public safety. So I just wanted to share this with you, to reassure you that there are provisions in this ordinance that ultimately empower our animal control officers to take actions needed to protect public health and safety. So now, looking at the regulations themselves, and what's new and unique to this ordinance. Animals that are deemed to be potentially dangerous or vicious shall be spayed or neutered, and this is new with this ordinance, may not be kept on a patio or porch, and this is new with this ordinance, when kept outside, must be kept in a five-sided kennel that has been inspected by an animal control officer, must be muzzled when walked on a leash, and the leash may not exceed three feet in length, must have a registered microchip, the owner must maintain three hundred thousand dollars' worth of homeowner's liability insurance, the owner must post signs warning of a potentially dangerous dog. New to this ordinance would be the anti-tethering regulations, and also new to this ordinance would be the breeding regulations. So if you were to ask, what are the major differences between our current law and our proposed ordinance? So, in the proposed ordinance, when an animal presents probable cause to believe the animal poses an immediate threat to safety, our animal control officers are empowered to seize the animal. In the current ordinance, the language reads that only upon serious injury would our animal control officers be empowered to seize an animal. In the new ordinance, sterilization would be a requirement if your animal is deemed potentially dangerous or vicious. In the current ordinance, that's not the case. In the new ordinance, breeding would not be permitted of dangerous animals. In the current ordinance, it is. In the new ordinance, a five-sided kennel is required, just like the current ordinance, except we strengthen that by adding that the dog may not be kept on a patio or porch. Both ordinances have the muzzling requirement, the new ordinance strengthens it by saying the leash may not be longer than three feet in length. Both ordinances have the three hundred thousand dollars' worth of homeowner's insurance. Only the new ordinance has the anti-tethering regulations, and only the new ordinance has the habitual animal offender category. Now looking at the anti-tethering regulations. So the current ordinance does not address tethering, the proposed ordinance does. The reason why is dogs that live their life on a chain are nearly three times more likely to bite, and are far more likely to become a public nuisance. The provisions themselves would require that the animal can move freely without risk of injury or choking, that the animal has access to water and shelter, that the collar or harness be made of leather or nylon, that there be a swivel device on both ends of the tether to prevent tangling or choking, that the animal is over six months and spayed or neutered, that the animal be monitored by an adult while on the tether, and no tethering would be permitted between eleven P.M. and six A.M. Now looking at the habitual animal offender regulations, our current ordinance does not address this. The proposed ordinance would define this individual as any pet owner or harbinger who has sighted three times or more during a two-year period for an animal care regulation. The regulation itself is, if found to be a habitual animal offender, the commission may restrict or prohibit pet ownership for a minimum of five years or more. Looking at the proposed pet licensing and pet limits, so currently, it's estimated that only three to five percent of South Bend residents participate in the licensing program. Some members of council have suggested that in its current form, the city's licensing program places an unfair burden on responsible pet owners, offers little incentive for responsible pet owners, and does not provide convenient methods for compliance. In an effort to address these issues, the proposed licensing program will provide residents who have all of their pets, and that would be dogs or cats, spayed or neutered, and are current on their rabies vaccines, one low flat fee to license all of their own pets. So, if you have unaltered pets, you are still only allowed to have three pets, and your annual licensing fees would be, for one unaltered animal, it would be fifty dollars, and for two to three unaltered animals, it would be three hundred. And the example that I had shared with you all earlier is, with the low-cost spay-neuter clinic that we have here in town, ABC Clinic, it's sixty dollars to neuter a dog. So if you had three unneutered males, it would only cost one hundred and eighty dollars to get all of your dogs neutered, to come in compliance with this, to be eligible for the enhanced licensing program, versus paying the three hundred dollar annual licensing fee. So there's a true financial incentive for residents to get their pets spayed and neutered with this licensing program. On the other hand, if your pets are already altered, and you are eligible for the enhanced licensing program. So, for example, if you're a family that owns two dogs and two cats, and they're all spayed and neutered, and up-to-date on their rabies vaccine, you would pay one low flat fee of twenty-five dollars a year, in contrast to the sixty dollars owed under the city's current ordinance. And to ease compliance, we will have convenient online licensing and licensing in the field. On the issue of pet limits, so the current law is, you are limited to three pets, and that's a combination of cats or dogs. The proposed law is, if altered, we would remove pet limits and focus on care rather than number. And the reason why is the number of dogs and cats that can be owned should not be arbitrary, but rather should be up to the individual, assuming that the individual can provide adequate care for all of their animals. The way this will be put, the way that this will be enforced is, there are provisions in the proposed chapter that will allow for a balance between individual property rights and adequate humane care for animals, and as you see, I've provided the provisions here. Under the impoundment and reclaim policies, the proposed law would have a mandatory sterilization requirement for pets that were caught the second time running at lunch. And the reason why is mandatory sterilization laws have consistently been found to satisfy the legal rational relationship test for the following reasons. One unaltered dog in her progeny can produce an estimated sixty-seven thousand puppies in six years. A single fertile cat and her offspring can spawn approximately four hundred and twenty thousand kittens in seven years. Unaltered male dogs represent eighty percent of all dog bites, eighty-five percent of dogs hit by cars are intact, and here locally at South Bend Animal Care and Control, seventy-four percent of the pets we received last year were strays, and sixty-four percent here-to-date were strays. So we really need to get a handle on this, and spaying and neutering our pets is the way we're going to do it. Last but not least, we're going to talk about the trap-neuter return provisions that have been added. So under the new ordinance, it would provide for individuals who want to responsibly care for community cats by participating in a TNR program. And as I said earlier, I know many of you have spoken with members of the community, you're already familiar with trap-neuter return, so I'm not going to go into the science of trap-neuter return. But the reasons why we're promoting TNR is, TNR permanently reduces the number of free-roaming cats, and TNR also reduces nuisance behavior. And here in South Bend, we've already had some success with trap-neuter return. In the near northwest neighborhood, a local resident, Becky Kaiser, has actually taken upon herself to spay-neuter sixteen adult cats that were in her neighborhood. By doing so, in her neighborhood, they haven't had any litters of kittens, and they've also seen a significant reduction in the public nuisance, in the nuisance behaviors, as well as issues with vermin, like skunks and raccoons, because cats are territorial and they've kept them out. So we have a local success story with trap-neuter return. So I will end there, and share with you one of our lovely recent residents of South Bend Animal Care and Control, this is Smurfette, and she thanks you for your consideration of this very important bill.
Welcome. At this time, we would like to start on my right, and come down for questions. Only questions at this point, for our presenter, Councilwoman Shea. Let him with Councilman Stott.
Just one quick question, it was one I forgot, committee. It's something that we can work through, Valerie. Enclosed, basically under the dangerous dog, there's enclosed, basically fenced-in area, protected area with outside. If it's under a hundred and twenty feet, and this is flipping over to my zoning chairmanship, you don't need a build permit, and also, what we need to do is clarify, we couldn't get with the building department in time. If they have an outside structure, like a shed or something, in this, they wouldn't be in compliance, because they couldn't have two outside structures. So it's something that we can work through, I just want everybody to be aware of that, so, something we need to look at, and make sure that the pen is the right size for whatever animal you have.
Thank you, Councilman.
But that's all I have.
Are you suggesting any change in language right now?
I don't think we can change it right now, it's not time, it might be a minor change down the road, but that's about it.
Thank you.
It's not a deal breaker.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Councilman?
Not from me.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Henry Davis?
No.
Okay. Councilman Fred Furlik.
Thank you, Valerie, not right now. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Gary Vonn?
Actually, Valerie, the obvious question would be with regards to TNR. When you're not dealing with a trap-neuter return scenario, which is one we've sort of discussed, how in this, with regards to this provision, do you deal with that sort of a situation? In this case, it's not doing trap-neuter release, it's simply feeding of random animals in a neighborhood. Is that a fair statement, with three fair sta, or description?
A very fair statement, and so, as you and I know, we've been working on, working with a resident in the Fifth District who is dealing with a situation which is not trap-neuter return. It's a woman breaking the law, feeding free-roaming cats without any regard for her neighbor. In the current ordinance as well, in the new and proposed ordinance, the behavior of this woman would be breaking the law, and I did speak with Mr. Oldry today to reassure him that, from his suggestions and his attendance at a recent public meeting, we amended under public nuisance language that if the owner of an ear-tipped colony is still allowing the cats to be a public nuisance, animal control is still empowered to intervene. I can read to you the amendment, it has to, it's under public nuisance, and the language reads as follows. An ear-tipped altered community cat may not be considered a public nuisance solely by virtue of its status as a community cat. So, simply by the fact that it's now an ear-tipped, spayed or neutered and vaccinated cat, that doesn't, that doesn't prohibit it from being a public nuisance. The owner or maintainer of the colony would still have to address issues if it is, if the cats are behaving as a public nuisance to the neighbor.
What within this proposed ordinance, is it going to give sufficient control to the animal control officers to either impound the animals, or, what authority will the animal control officer have in that instance, and what are the measures, as you understand it, that will be used to bring into compliance or return, you know, normalcy to the neighborhood?
If I may, President Davis, at this point in time, I can call on Matt Harmon, our director.
I'm at his side.
Matt, if you could speak to this, you're very familiar with this particular situation.
Yeah, Matt Harmon, Shelter Manager, South Bend Animal Care and Control, resident of South Bend. I specifically, in this case specifically, we are addressing this situation more as, it's not a TNR situation by any means, that's not what's happening here, it's just a person harboring animals at that, in that sense. So essentially, what the steps it would be taking, and what we're currently trying to take with this particular instance, is address it almost as if the woman has too many animals, unlicensed, unvaccinated, that sort of, it goes back to the basics in that instance. When it comes to specifically TNR situation, in the future, when we could be promoting TNR in the city, we have put provisions in here that specifically state that South Bend Animal Care and Control still has the ability to regulate the TNR if we need to. So for instance, very specifically, the colony has to be recognized and registered with one of our registered TNR initiatives or coalitions of sorts. But it has, that coalition has to be recognized instead by South Bend Animal Care and Control. So they have to essentially be on this, you know, this VIP list, essentially, you know, to be able to say that then this TNR community is legitimate, and it's being managed properly. So the private, the private, the public-private sort of partnership between the two groups is going to be very important in the future.
And if, if despite registration and recognition by the colony managers or whatever, you still are confronted with an issue such as we've been dealing with with regards to, it seems to have rather than driven problem, or driven problem animals out of the neighborhood, seems to have attracted animals because feeding is available. It has to do with raccoons and skunks and things like that, which then becomes a huge problem. How do you deal with that going forward?
So part of a managed colony is that they have to, they have specific kinds that they're supposed to be feeding, there's a science behind it, and they will have a member of TNR communities speaking later more specifically, but there are specific times when you have to feed the colonies to avoid wildlife coming in, and it is down to, it's a proven science at this point, or a supported science, I should say. So, it all comes down to how it's being managed, and so, SBACC will rely on the private partnership between the recognized groups, and if, and if there's an issue in this specific area, then SBACC will be talking to the private partnership, whichever coalition, initiative, et cetera, et cetera, is in charge of that particular colony. We have only just a few in this area, I can think of two that are active in our community as far as the TNR programs. But, the main goal is going to be that we can, we can still hold the people accountable so that we don't have cats running rampant. The idea of TNR is to fix the problem, and there are studies that show that it does help the problem significantly, whether it's in the behavior, or the numbers, et cetera, et cetera. Cats are territorial animals, so they're going to defend that territory and keep everything else out, including other cats, and that's, that's, that's basically, you know, that's cat behavior. So, that's going to be very important, the management of the colony is going to be very important, and that, like I said, that's where it's going to be critical, that our public-private partnerships are going to be successful, which I feel very confident.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. You may go to the next.
You want to put a session after the same?
Oh, Matt, before you sit down?
Just again, it's the same question at the committee level, but as an animal control expert, do you think that this ordinance will result in fewer dog bites, fewer serious dog bites, and do so in a cost-effective manner?
Yes, I, and like I said earlier, we're addressing a lot of the major issues that cause bites, cause nuisance animals in the city. So we're addressing the tethering, we're addressing the spaying neuter because like I discussed before, the hormones that are going through these animals are causing them to do undesirable behaviors, spraying, marking, biting, you know. The male dogs specifically, like Councilwoman Shea had mentioned, was 80% of dog bites are from an unaltered male, which I can, I can confirm the numbers, but I know just through basic observation of the shelter and my experience, that's, that's pretty much the case. We get a lot of unaltered male dogs because they're going on search. So those hormones are being addressed in our ordinance. The reasons, we're breaking it down further and just not just focusing on a breed or focusing on this, this and that, we're focusing on what makes an animal bite. We're really taking it down to the science and really looking at it in detail. So that's where we're wanting to move forward and address that specifically. So I definitely feel very confident with that.
Thank you. Councilman. Do you have a question, Becky, suppose, or?
I have a question. Growing up, it was the Dublin Impincher, then it was the German Shepherd, and now it's the Pit Bull. This legislation talks about eliminating breed-specific language. What in both of your, for both of you, what gives you the confidence that that will provide safety and security for our city? There's been a lot of questions regarding the Pit Bull issues and comments regarding that I'm an avid neighbor that just got one. And so what gives you that confidence when you have looked at issues, we would say, dog bites, history, whatever, that this language will help promote safety in our community? And go for it. Whichever one, both of you can discuss that.
So we're, I'll let, I'll let Councilwoman Shea go under her, sort of talk a little about that and I'll add wherever you like.
Thank you, President Davis. So we will also, we have a licensed veterinarian and also an animal behavior expert who will be speaking tonight. So she will be able, on a much more scientific level than I can, address that issue. But I did provide some supporting data here. So there are factors, of course, influencing an animal's behavior. And a dog's tendency to bite depends on at least five interrelated factors: heredity, early experience, later socialization and training, medical and behavioral health and victim behavior. Many studies have shown that failing to neuter a dog and training a dog for long periods of time are high-risk factors for bites. So although I'm taking what you're saying and trying to explain what sort of motivating factors influence a dog's propensity towards aggression, but if I may bring it back to the ordinance. We try very hard as a committee to address the causes of that behavior. As I've said, 70 to 76% in one study and 80% in another study have shown that all reported dog bites, that a large number of reported dog bites are by unaltered males. So again, you'll see consistent through this ordinance in many different forms and fashions, spaying and neutering is an essential component to the policies we're recommending. Likewise, as you know, we've added anti-tethering language. Chained dogs are three times more likely to bite. And regarding chained dogs, I've provided all the reasons why chaining is likely to make a dog more aggressive. Chained dogs rarely get the same level of socialization as a household dog. Chained dogs cannot flee a threatening situation, increasing the probability of a fear bite or attack. Chained dogs are exposed to extreme weather conditions and the mercy of tormenting children. I don't know if you all remember, but in 2006, there was a horrible, horrible story here in South Bend. Some kids had spray painted and I believe they had stabbed, the dog's name was Elmo, and left him in an alley. It was really, really sad. So there's, there's just a lot of causes for aggression. And I would argue that breed is not one of them. You will find that in terms of temperament, there's the American Temperament, the ATTS, I'm sorry, I can't think of what the temperament, it's a temperament society.
Uh huh.
And they, they perform temperament tests on dogs to see how dogs maintain their disposition as they walk through a park or neighborhood where everyday life situations are encountered. During this walk, the dog experiences visual, auditory and tactile stimulation. Neutral, friendly and threatening situations are encountered, calling into play the dog's ability to distinguish between non-threatening situations and those calling for a watch full of protective reactions. And I share this with you because I want to indicate or to share with you that when these tests were recently performed, you'll find that right below the Labrador Retriever, which is I think America's favorite dog right now, Pit Bulls were the highest performing in terms of temperament. So I know that Dr. Furlough and I have had debates at length about Pit Bulls temperament, but the science actually would argue otherwise, that these dogs are unstable and have bad temperaments. Does that answer your question?
In terms of like for people who have already been keeping their dogs unchanged highly and pretty much doing the things that you have stated that may have created them to now be aggressive or vicious or dangerous dogs, as we were talking about tonight, to pass this bill, then what happens? Will they just go ahead and take those dogs off those chains and what happens to those kind of dogs that have already been conditioned to be in that kind of situation?
Well, unfortunately, you're right, there are some, many people that have done, you know, bad things to animals. So under the new ordinance, obviously, a dog would be deemed either potentially dangerous or vicious. Potentially dangerous would be based on two incidents where a neighbor or where a resident felt threatened by the animal. If the animal were determined to be potentially dangerous, then all of the regulations that were required for a potentially dangerous or vicious animal would apply.
Is there anything that we could, that would be in place for owners that the shelter could have for those kind of dogs that have already been conditioned? As we pass this and once it becomes effective, they would be off their tethers, I mean, they'd be off different things, and yet so you have these dangerous dogs. Is there any kind of education or any kind of thing that you'd be able to provide these kind of owners who have not necessarily been in compliance and been training these dogs over the years like this? And now we changed this, we could have a spike in all these dogs that have been, you know, trained wrong. What are we going to do in the meantime until more people are getting compliance with this? What's, you know, that gap that we're going to have? What is your suggestion?
One of the major aspects of kind of SBACC moving into this more progressive and kind of, this movement we're trying to push forward, we've, even up to this, year-to-date essentially, we've improved the public eye of SBACC, we're working on it. It's still, it's still a work in progress, but that's what's going to be one of the major things, you know. It came down to so many different things, you know, different marketing tools even, going into showing that SBACC is part of the community again. So that's one of our building blocks up to this, up to this next point, of really hitting education hard specifically, changing the culture of South Bend as far as, you know, it's not going to be a year-long process, it's not going to be three years, it's not going to be, it's going to be a while, you know. It's going to take a while to be able to change the perspective of the residents of the city. But I think in the long run, it's going to be important to partner with a lot of the private entities that are in the city specifically. We recently had Pet Refuge, they built a new shelter in our city to be part of our community. And we're excited to be working with them extensively at this point, too, to build our education. We're, you know, we're starting right now with kind of a, some programs with kids and things, but then you have to go further with, beyond just kids, you know. Kids can influence the programs, we have other programs in the city as well to do the same thing. But it's also targeting those, those members of the community that, you know, need the extra help or need the extra education, who just aren't quite there yet. And that's going to be, you know, every time an officer goes out in the field, they'll, they'll provide educational tools, whether it's a simple brochure that's an easy read, quick read, you know, just talk in general. It's going to be strongly encouraged, not only to have formal education, but as well, you know, formal education as in programs, billboards, et cetera, et cetera, warm-ups and stuff. But also in the field, education with the officers, and they'll have some training with that specifically. That's going to be a major, major goal of this, moving forward, not only just because, I mean, that would happen regardless of, if this ordinance passed tonight. That's one of the major, major goals of where we're heading with SBACC.
And since you brought up, we were talking about the education piece of that, that leads us right into, could you speak, or how do you enforce all of this? How do you enforce it here in the city with the new changes, the new changes in place, put into place? How will we be able to enforce that better than what we are doing now? And could you talk about that, both of you?
So providing our staff with a more extensive training, in the past, they didn't have that sort of thing, they didn't have training, whether it's the NACA, which is the Animal Control Association.
Excuse me, they didn't have that?
They did not have that in the past.
They have it now?
They're, we're working towards it. It's a very expensive program, so we have to go through grants and things like that to be able to get that going. But those are major goals, to have training, not only for the officers in the field, but, you know, equip them with the tools to be able to handle situations in the field, as well as the internal staff, as well as be able to handle these same sorts of issues that come into the shelter every day, because we deal with diverse people and we have a lot of public contact at Animal Control. So we, it's going to be a long process, it's going to be, it's going to come down to a lot of internal protocols being changed. But at the same time, what we were kind of keeping an eye on while we were producing this, this proposed ordinance, is we're doing a lot of things we're already doing in this ordinance. We're just laying it out so that my staff can then just look through and say, here's what I'm supposed to be doing right now. So that the, the public can even say, here's what I'm supposed to be doing now, this is my expectation. So we're holding people accountable and laying out expectations much more clearly. So it's not a matter of adding extra work to the staff, which, there is going to be different things happening, but those different things will also be taking away from a lot of the other things, you know, like the online licensing is going to be a big thing, so that people can, you know, sit on the couch in their pajamas and license their pets and make it super easy, you know, as well as mobile stations as well, so whether it's clinics, et cetera. We're making, we want to make it more accessible for people to be in, you know.
Compliance.
Compliance, that's what I'm looking for, I think you found.
And President Davis, if I may add, and Matt and I have talked at length about this and how this will ultimately actually make his officers' jobs easier, I'm going to give you one example, and Councilwoman Henry Davis and I were talking about this earlier, that good law should never be written in subjective terms. Laws should be written clearly so that the end user can know exactly what's expected of them, and then of course, the enforcing agency can easily enforce because the definitions and the language are all clear. So in our current ordinance, if one of Matt's officers were dispatched to a home regarding a complaint about animal care regulations, let's say, that the dog is not being provided adequate shelter, in our current ordinance, the pet owner would, the only guidance the pet owner would have is, the language is, "has proper and adequate structure provided that it will protect the animal from all the elements of the weather and will allow that animal to stand, sit and lie down without restriction and is kept in a sanitary manner." So the issue with that is what's proper and adequate to you versus to a member of the audience to me could be very different. Now in the new ordinance, this is just one example, but we took great pains to make sure that the language was very clear so that end users, our citizens, would know exactly what it is that is expected of them, so that when one of our officers were dispatched, there wouldn't be confusion or debate. So under the new ordinance, I'll read the definition of adequate shelter to you. So adequate shelter is a structure designed specifically to shelter an animal that allows the animal to maintain its body heat with a roof, structured floor, three sides free of leaks or openings to the wind and the rain, and a fourth side allowing access that is protected from the elements. The structure is physically located in a dry area, allowing the animal to stay dry and access outside the structure to dry ground that is mud-free. Livestock requires a structure with three sides and a roof. So anyway, I read that, I share that with you to illustrate that great pains were taken with the language in this new ordinance to eliminate vague and ambiguous terms because good law should be clear and easy to understand for our residents, and it should be objective and not subjective. So that's just one example when you ask how our officers will enforce this. It actually will be easier for them to enforce because it's, it's written very intentionally to be clear of vague and ambiguity and remove the subjectivity. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now this time, we move to the public portion. We would like for our attorney to please explain the public portion at this time.
Any person who would like to speak in favor of the bill must get your name and your residence and address, who can, five minutes to speak, do not ask to be a resident of the city of South Bend to speak. That time will then be total, anyone who wants to speak in opposition, also considering resident events, they also have a limited time, people speak in remonstrance, set a total of 30 minutes for attention to the amount of time that the people in favor of bills vote. At the end of that, if there are any questions that are raised, that those questions will be addressed during the rebuttal period by the pre-sentence South Bend attorney.
Thank you. I also would like to ask Councilman Tim Scott to please keep our time.
Sure thing, President.
Thank you, Councilman Scott. And at this time, those who would like to speak in favor of the substitute amended Bill 1714, please come forth.
Ladies and gentlemen, I know many of us have discussed, we all have a passion for our animals. There's a handful of folks that choose Dr. Colby. For all of those that were planning to speak, please come up and line up.
Those who would like to speak in favor, if you can just line up that way, and we do the same for those who would like to speak in opposition.
Where are you going? Wait, wait, I'm going to speak in favor. I've got two amendments, that's all. I just wanted to cover it.
Hi, I'm Dr. Maria Colby, DVM. I'm a South Bend resident for most of my life. I live at 1202 East Donald, South Bend. I'm a veterinarian at the Cryder Veterinary Clinic in Ranger, and I'm also the volunteer veterinarian for South Bend Animal Care and Control, and also a member of the special committee that works this bill. As a local veterinarian with eight years of practice, I'm here to speak in support of this ordinance. I believe it will serve our community well in important in many ways. It enhances public safety by empowering animal control officers and strengthens the punishment for repeat offenders. It's also fiscally responsible by helping reduce the burden of animals on the city and residents. It reduces our city's financial and legal liability if our current laws are challenged in court, as many statutes similar to our current code have been declared unconstitutional and cities must spend thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees. It also works to improve the lives of animals in our shelters and community while also improving community safety. It's also more humane and up-to-date. I recognize that there is one issue of particular interest to the council, and that is breed-specific legislation, or BSL. BSL is an issue that has been discussed at length by the American Veterinary Medical Association, the AVMA, which opposes BSL. Banning specific breeds to control dog bite injuries ignores the scope and nature of the problem and is unlikely to protect community members. Breed bans assume that all dogs of a specific breed are likely to bite instead of acknowledging that most dogs are not a problem. It also fails to recognize that all dogs are capable of aggression. As Val already pointed out, a dog's tendency to bite is a very multi-tactorial thing. In 2001, the AVMA published a landmark study titled "A Community Approach to Dog Bite Prevention." Many of the recommendations from that study are included in the proposed ordinance, including, as she mentioned, the spaying, neutering and anti-tethering laws. In my job, I've worked with many aggressive dogs of a vast In my job, I've worked with many aggressive dogs of a vast array of breeds, including many breeds considered to be excellent family pets. In my years of experience as a vet, my observations of pit bulls and pit bull mixes have been they are no more dangerous or aggressive than any other breed. Furthermore, many of these so-called pit bulls are the friendliest, happiest dogs that are in no way a threat to our community. They don't deserve to be punished for another dog's crime. Furthermore, BSL is subjective, difficult, and expensive to enforce. It discourages good people from doing the right thing and licensing their pets or bringing them to the clinic. On multiple occasions, I've had people confess there were less than springing another pet that might be labeled a pit bull for fear of retribution. Finally, BSL also significantly contributes to mental strain and compassion fatigue in animal control workers. In summary, I believe this ordinance will serve our community well. I believe it's time for South Bend to lead by example. I hope you will also support this bill.
My name is Pam Comer, and I'm the president of Pet Refuge, which is located at 4626 Burnett Drive in South Bend. Pet Refuge is a not-for-profit, no-kill, all-volunteer animal shelter that was established in April of 1978. With over 35 years of service in the Michiana community, our over 150 volunteer members are committed to protecting the health, welfare, and best possible placement of every animal placed in the care of our organization. The recognition of the value of each animal life, and therefore no euthanasia of any animal unless determined by a veterinarian to be the most merciful treatment, spaying and neutering of every animal to help control pet overpopulation, and educating the public as to pet care and welfare is our mission. In October of last year, we opened our doors to our new South Bend facility. We are delighted to be a part of the South Bend community and appreciate the support of this council with our zoning requests. In September of this year, we will be re-communicating our low-cost spay-neuter clinic, the ABC Clinic, from Ranger to South Bend. And on a side note, we opened that clinic three years ago, and at today's date, we have done over 25,000 surgeries. We look forward to serving the residents of South Bend and being an integral part of helping to reduce the pet overpopulation problem here in our community. Having been a part of the advisory panel that wrote this ordinance, Pet Refuge is delighted that the city of South Bend has committed the time and attention to ensuring that its laws and policies are humane and up-to-date. Pet Refuge and many volunteer, many volunteer members firmly believe that pet ownership is significantly a quality of life issue. We at Pet Refuge are in full support of this bill. We believe this bill will improve the lives of animals in our shelters and in our community. We believe the bill empowers our animal control officers to protect public safety and strengthens punishment for repeat offenders. Finally, we believe this bill will make South Bend a more humane and progressive city, which is the kind of city that Pet Refuge wants to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Gabrielle Thompson. I live at 1121 Stanfield in the Hager Heights Division of South Bend, and I'm the co-founder of Pit Bull South Bend, a local advocacy group. First of all, I want to thank the council and the special committee for all the time that you've spent on this rewrite, which is obviously a very important issue to our community. Don't worry, I'm not going to bore you with the obvious details of how much I or we love our dogs. But I do want to reiterate the fact that this rewrite is not just about BSL or breed-specific legislation or pit bull-type dogs being deemed vicious, although that is the portion that we champion specifically. Yes, we feel strongly that our dogs should be treated equally and have a fair chance at life. Updating the municipal codes is truly beneficial for all of our causes here. Now, that being said, so many of our city's issues do affect pit bull-type dogs. Fighting, backyard breeding, neglect, abuse, overpopulation, high euthanasia rates, and discrimination, there is also often a criminal element surrounding these dogs. These exploited animals are truly symptomatic of a bigger problem. Besides bringing us up to date with the facts of the state and country, the improved language will address all of the problems that I just mentioned. Safety and efficiency are your top concern, as they should be. That is why supporting this rewrite is a no-brainer. Bottom line, BSL is not, has been consistently proven to not be cost-effective or even successful, it's actually counterproductive. Take Denver, for example, where pit bull-type dogs are completely banned, they actually made the top 10 list for highest amount of dog bites reported. And none of those bites were pit bulls, by the way. Another reason is that there are 20-plus breeds that get mislabeled as pit bulls. Science shows that breed does not cause a dog to be aggressive, all dogs can bite. In fact, the last few stories I've seen on our local news involved other breeds. What does cause aggression? Lack of socialization, like tethering, unoffered animal, and irresponsible ownership. We as a city need to correct these bad owners, not punish good dogs. As we all know, South Bend has some major issues with safety and crime. I would like to back that if we asked everyone in this room if they know of a house that is suspicious or unsafe, they would promptly give you an address. This house would have several issues, including code violations, domestic abuse, criminal activities such as drug use, and a neglected animal. Giving our officers the clear-cut guidelines to deal with this is essential. The new face of animal control has made major strides to correct the failures of the past administration. It's up to you to legally support this growth. As your contingents, this is what we are asking you to do. As I said, I'm not going to go into the statistics, legal precedents, and personal stories, but you do know that all of the research and fact-checking confirms that benefits of changes such as these are successful. Yes, we love our pets, but we also see the bigger picture. We want legislation that not only protects our dogs, but the neglected dog down the street, the cats in the alleys that no one seems to care about. We want a safer community, we want pride in our neighborhoods, and we want to be able to trust our system. Ignoring these issues, discrimination against whatever the dangerous dog trend is, and withholding the proper tools from our animal care and control officers is only hurting the community and culture of South Bend. We aren't asking for more money, but we are asking for the ability to use it more wisely and effectively. Many of our sister cities are looking to us to be the example. I am new to animal advocacy, but I am impressed with the overwhelming support and passion that I've seen. I've also heard the incredulous reactions of so many that just assumed that we already had up-to-date, fair, and humane regulations in place. So let's just get this passed and send a message out that yes, South Bend is a safe, efficient, caring, and relevant city. Thank you.
My name is Jen Goble. I reside at 53699 Maplehurst Street, South Bend, Indiana. I'm not an expert like everyone before me. I'm new to the animal advocacy world, but I do have a lot of personal experience with that. I'm here today for multiple reasons. I'm a police officer with South Bend PD. I'm one of the founders and the executive director of the 360 Project, a concerned community member, and an animal advocate. I've always been an animal lover, but I can't honestly say that I've been an animal advocate. This November will mark nine years since that's changed. You see, nine years ago, my last name was Radek, and I was in an abusive relationship. I came home after a long shift at four AM to find that my sweet Lexi had been beaten to death by my boyfriend at the time, who also happened to be a police officer. He had dislocated her shoulder out of the socket, which is unheard of in regards to the physical build of an Akita, if anyone's familiar with that. Broke her back and ruptured her spleen. He had carried her down and laid her in the corner of the basement and let her bleed to death eternally. The vet that conducted the autopsy said that the only way that those injuries could have occurred was by him swinging her by her leg against a wall like a baseball bat, and then repeatedly kicking her. So why am I here sharing that all with you today? It's a well-known fact that animal abuse is a prevalent factor in homes with violence and abuse against spouses and children. I'm here today because these animals do not have a voice for the treatment they receive from their owners. In hindsight, I now realize that he had been beating both my dogs the entire time we were together when I was absent from the home. They could not tell or display the misery that they were in. That particular case attracted national spotlight, and it was at that time I realized how weak our laws were, being as he killed my dog and got a misdemeanor, which if he had actually abused her further, he would have gotten the felony. So I stand before you today asking that you pass this ordinance to help give these voiceless animals a better chance. For those that are not aware of what the 360 Project is all about, let me explain it a little bit further. It is everything that Councilwoman Belche and her constituents have worked so hard to present for you tonight to vote on this evening. I never realized what I took for granted and always thought that it was common knowledge on how to properly care for an animal. When I was raised, I was raised in a home where we spayed and neutered our pets, their shots were always up to date, we never tethered our dogs, and our home always seemed to be an invisible sign to strays that were welcome and would be cared for. Since I have been working with the at-risk youth of our community, I realize they don't know what they don't know. It is truly amazing to see kids connect with the abusing and neglecting animals of our community that just want to please and love and be part of a family, maybe of which are our pity types or bully breeds. Sadly enough, that's also what a lot of these kids need and want to. We run a four-week program with 12 different classes. It's not about playing or training these dogs, it's about educating our youth in our community. There is no community outreach currently for our at-risk youth regarding humane education, and the 360 Project helps to bridge that gap. When reading the talking points of what is trying to be accomplished today, it is almost like reading our curriculum. We talk nonstop about the importance of spaying and neutering and the effect it has on the pet overpopulation and pet homelessness. We talk about the prejudices that society has against our bully breeds and our pity types and how unfair they are. I always tell my kids, you don't want to be judged by the color of your skin, we shouldn't be judging dogs by their breeds. In the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "I look to a day when people will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." The same principle needs to be applied to the dogs in our community. We discuss tethering and the psychological effects it has on dogs and their social skills and overall health. We debate on why backyard breeding is bad or harmful to our community, and we give these kids resources on what they can do when they see animals that are being abused and neglected, sometimes of which is in their own home.
One minute.
We show them the resources and business that will help them keep their pets healthy and safe. We explain dog fighting and the consequences of participating in it. They see the aftermath of those fighting dogs and bait dogs, among other animals. It's very difficult for me to educate these kids, and then in the background, we have no legislation to back up what I'm trying to educate them on. We preach equality in regards to the ethnicity of each other and the human race, and then our laws dictate the exact opposite when it comes to animals, when it clearly is the same principle when it comes to breeds. Most of them have a bull, oh, sorry. When discussing breed-to-civic legislation with our kids, they shake their heads in disbelief that this ordinance is, the current ordinance is in place. Most of them have a bully breed or love bully breeds. Ninety percent of the breeds we try to work with are pity types simply because we want to prove that that breed of dog is not the problem. A large percentage of the time, it is the owner.
Your turn is up.
Thank you.
Well, most of you know me. My name is Pam Wozlowski, and I live at 1102 South 32nd Street in the River Park neighborhood of South Bend. I am also the director of Michiana Feral Cat Initiative. We are a 501(c)(3) trap-neuter return group, and what our organization has done in South Bend since 2009 is humanely reduced the cat population through sterilization. It sounded kind of like you already knew what TNR was about, so I think I'm going to skip what I had written and kind of wing it a little bit. One of the things that I do want to do, though, is kind of compare and contrast a little bit between standard methods with cats and what TNR can do for a community. This isn't new and unproven. This has been happening in force since the 50s. Here in the States, it's been pretty much the 1970s that we've practiced it, and it is now to the point where it's pretty much nationwide. Well-known cities that have really embraced this are places like Jacksonville, San Jose, San Antonio, Indianapolis, Cincinnati, Albuquerque. Here, between Elkhart and South Bend, we have three trap-neuter groups that are working, and everyone, even in Elkhart, Middlebury, and Bristol, have been embracing this idea. One of the ways that TNR successes happen in reducing those colonies is that it affects your open-admission shelters. And a good way to measure that success is by a reduction in intake and a reduction in euthanasia rates for cats. Right now, if a cat isn't social, or just by the overwhelming volume of cats that animal control and rescues have to deal with on a daily basis, chances are not good even for the sweetest cat to come out of a shelter alive. To give you an example, San Jose, when they implemented, and this is San Jose Animal Care and Control, in two years, their euthanasia rates went down by 40%, and the intake of cat and kittens went down by 25%. We all have cats here in South Bend, they're everywhere. There's an estimated 17,000 to 30,000 free-roaming cats in our city. People feed cats. They're going to continue to feed cats. This is what people look at as a compassionate thing. What Trap Neuter Return is trying to do is not only get the population to be humanely reduced, but it's trying to also teach colony caretakers how to responsibly take care of those animals so that they aren't a nuisance to their neighbors. You can't catch and kill your way out of this. Scientists have come up with a figure of 50%, 50% of all the cats in South Bend would have to be killed before it would make a dramatic reduction in the population that we have as a whole. Mark Kump was a former president of the National Animal Control Association, and I don't always agree with these guys. He says there's no department that I'm aware of that has enough money in their budget to simply practice the old capture-and-euthanize policy. Nature just keeps on having kittens. South Bend can't try to kill over 15,000 cats in a perpetual program of catch-and-kill. Setting aside the horrible idea of the whole thing and the cruelty that's inherent in that, who's going to implement it? Who's going to have the time, the money, and what public is going to buy into that? People aren't happy with lethal control methods. They not only have not been effective ever in decades and centuries cats have been here, in the 2011 Associated Press survey, 71% of respondents said that they felt shelters should only kill an animal or euthanize an animal, or when it was so sick that they were too ill to be successfully treated or were too aggressive to be adopted. So you have expense, which is 4.5% to 9% more expensive to euthanize an animal than it is to do TNR. We've had a lot of people in South Bend embrace TNR. When they do this, they're doing it out of their pockets, their money that they are spending to take care of a community issue. They get these cats altered, it reduces nuisance behaviors like the mating behaviors, the yowling, the spraying, the things that tick the neighbors off. When they partner with us, not only are they being the responsible people that are paying to have this done, they're also learning, what time do we feed those cats? When do we pull the food? What are deterrents that neighbors can use? How do we make them go in our yard in a litter box instead of in the neighbor's yard? There are a lot of things that are involved with a responsible TNR colony and the caretaker that has done that. So, just, um...
Shell Clodo, 19447 Kern Road in North Bend County. Even though my husband and I live in the county, we would like to speak in support of this bill. My husband could not attend tonight's meeting due to previous commitment, but he also fully supports this bill. Back in March, the Humane Society suddenly showed up at our door stating they received a report that we were over our pet limit. We were completely taken by surprise, as we have lived in our current home for over 22 years with multiple pets and have never once received any form of complaint from neighbors. The Humane Society told us that we could file for a special use and zoning variance to try to keep our pets, or our pets would be taken from us for no other reason than a number. We have six dogs, mostly small and medium-sized mixed breeds, and four cats. They have all been rescued from various situations of abuse, neglect, abandonment, homelessness, or improper placements. They are all inside pets, spayed or neutered, vaccinated, licensed, and receive monthly heartworm and flea and tick medications, as well as regular veterinary and grooming care. Our home and yard is sanitary, safe, and secure. We have spent the past two months working through a very overwhelming, time-consuming, emotionally and financially draining process just to keep the pets we love and to whom we have made lifetime commitments. We have received favorable recommendations from the Health Department, the Area Plan Commission, the Zoning Board, and an informal favorable recommendation from the County Council thus far, with the final vote due next month. We believe we are a perfect example of why the current animal ordinance laws in the city, and hopefully one day soon also in the county, need to be changed. Had we not gone through this process for our pets, they would have been taken from a caring and loving home where individually they are one of 10, and placed in a shelter where individually they would be one of hundreds. Does this make any sense? There may be concerns that not having a pet number limit might lead to animal hoarding or a sudden rash of people wanting multiple
or a sudden rash of people wanting multiple pets. I can tell you that my husband and I are seen as an anomaly. Most people are surprised we have as many pets as we do, wonder why in the world we would want that many pets, and are amazed at how well we can manage them. Most people do not want multiple pets. If cared for properly, they are costly, time-consuming, and need constant management. However, there are people like my husband and I who are willing to make necessary sacrifices and adjustments in order to provide a loving home for pets who would otherwise be in a shelter and most probably ultimately euthanized. Raising the number of pets allowed will not lead to animal hoarding, rather, raising the number of pets allowed will lead to better animal homing, giving more pets a chance at life and more caring and loving homes. In closing, I would like to share a brief story that speaks to the heart of this proposed new animal ordinance law. You may be familiar with the starfish story. In the story, an old man is picking up starfish that have washed up along the beach and is throwing them back into the ocean. A young man sees him and points out to him that what he is doing is hopeless, because there are miles and miles of beach where millions and millions of starfish have washed up. He tells the old man that he can't save them off, that he can't possibly make a difference. As the old man picks up one more starfish and tosses it back into the ocean, he says to the young man, "It made a difference to that one." There are many people in this room today and in our community who, like the old man, are trying to make a difference for pets, who, like the starfish, probably would not survive otherwise. As city councilmen and women, you have an amazing opportunity today to make a difference for even more pets. Your vote to pass this bill will make a difference for more than one, more than 10, more than hundreds, and even thousands of pets. The difference you make today by your vote will long outlive all of us present in this room. Pets and pet caretakers living today and those yet to be born in future years will all benefit from this bill. Your vote today will create a legacy of law of heart, which is deeply needed, and will long be remembered with gratitude. Thank you.
Hi, Becky Kaiser, 913-Dominant Avenue. When I was asked to be on the commission, I think I was asked to be on the commission because we all know that I can be a bit of a pistol, and I'm a taxpayer. And for three years since we decided to get the new-- the money for the new shelter, we have tried as animal advocates and as taxpayers to change the culture of South Bend Animal Care and Control. A year ago, we were very, very lucky to get Matt Harmon as manager of the shelter. That culture has changed more rapidly than I think any of us in this realm could ever have believed. We need this ordinance. The ordinance isn't about anti-tethering, it isn't about BSL, it's about a logical tool for South Bend Animal Care and Control to do what needs to be done for quality-of-life issues, so that neighbors don't have to call and say, "The dog next door has been tied up in the yard for three days, no water, no food. What should I do? Well, we'll be out." Well, they come out, they say, "Well, we'll come back out in a day or two," and "Don't feed it." A normal human being in society is not going to watch an animal die averse of starvation. Now, we need education, we need to give South Bend Animal Care and Control the tools that everyone in this community needs for public health and safety when it comes to animal control. This ordinance is a logical step in that direction. BSL hasn't worked in any community that exists. It hasn't worked here, we know that. I live in a non-white-bred neighborhood. I have seven pit bulls in my neighborhood. They're lovely, lovely dogs. Does that mean that when I see one running at me in a neighborhood, that I'm not slightly taken aback? No! But if I see a German Shepherd, or a Chihuahua, or any other dog running at me aggressively, I'm taken aback. We need to start thinking about things logically. As a taxpayer, this gives South Bend Animal Care and Control the chance to do that, and I'm hoping you all say yes. Thank you.
Hi, the shortest one. Good evening, my name's Melissa Meinsberg, I live at 203-88-Keeperway, South Bend, 46637. I'm going to talk to you guys and speak on behalf of Smokey. This is the dog that is probably currently chained up and tethered right now as we speak. I learned about Smokey about seven months ago. My mother-in-law lives directly in front of where he's being kept, and if you guys were able to look through the pictures, you guys can see that his living conditions are rather poor, however, he does have food, water, and shelter. I've been a part of Bill Sykes's PBSB group on Facebook for some time now, for about a year, and I have brought the issue of poor Smokey up to the group recently, about last week, and I had asked for Bill Sykes's kind of recommendations on what we can do about this poor dog. My mother-in-law had kind of talked me out of asking for help because she feared that he was going to be euthanized because he was a pit bull, even though he is so loving and he's a great dog. So that's kind of where Bill comes into play. I'll ask him to come over first.
Name is Bill Sykes, I live at 189-27-Dominant-Road, 46637. Melissa's right. I was on Facebook one night, and I got a private message from her, I've seen her name before in her Facebook family, and she had told me about a dog named Smokey over-- I'm going to just give the name of the street, Scott Street, in South Bend. And so she explained the situation to me, I asked her to send pictures of the dog to me, and let me see. So what she did, which is the first set with the printing on it, I was kind of taken aback. I went to visit the site myself, took my own pictures, which are the ones that are a set of three right here. I took all several, but I picked these three as a representation of the dog. I then notified Animal Control and I asked for an animal welfare check. An officer came out, looked at the situation, said, "Yeah, it's bad, it's not a good situation, but because Smokey has a water bowl, he has a food bowl, and he's got some form of shelter, then there's not a whole lot we can do." I mean, it's bad, it's right on the board, that there's not a whole lot we can do. And this is one of the reasons I think we need to pass this new rewrite, is because the new rewrite addresses the issues of chain weight, it addresses the issue of the length of the tether, it addresses the issue of the type of shelter this dog has. If you look at the pictures, he's got a rainbow chain on him that's cutting into his neck, and I heard just today from somebody that-- [inaudible]
Yeah, a neighbor turned up on him, and the chain is cutting into his neck.
Bleeding right now. You can tell that the hair on his neck is all black from the oxidation from the steel chain. The ground is cluttered with glass and debris. This owner obviously does not care. The dog is unneutered, and I suspect he's been used as a stud, okay? And I just suspect that this is part of the underbelly of the backyard and basement breeding that's going on that's feeding this problem, and it needs to be addressed. And I think by passing this ordinance with the current-- with the language that's in there, it's going to help our officers enforce what is needed to help these animals. Now, before I was going to end this, I was going to say that we obtained over 2,000 signatures from people, not only in South Bend, but from Barren County, Marshall County, as far away as Fort Wayne, La Porte, and even St. Joe County, people that are watching this tonight. And they are hoping that South Bend will pass this new ordinance, so it may be an example for their cities and counties to follow. I had more, I had more I wanted to talk about, but I'm not going to reiterate what's already been said by all of us, but I do want to say that this dog, Smokey, he only has three strikes against him. First of all, he's considered a pit bull. He's in prison, he's got some shackles on him, he's 24/7 tethered. No dog should have to live like this. He has not had a chance to express his true dogness, if you want to call it that. He probably has not ever run and chased a wall, run freely, been a part of a family, played with kids. It's true. No matter, you know, here we are, no matter how much you research, no matter how many times you rehearse--
One minute, sir.
Okay, no matter how deep your passion, and sometimes you-- just sometimes it just doesn't come out right. One simple thing that can be asked me to write over tonight is that this ordinance be passed and made into law. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor?
I want to be Gav. All right, sir.
My name is Nancy Meyer, I live at 1835-Southernview, and I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I did want to make a couple of points. First of all, this may not be perfect, there may be a portion of this that individually some of you have a problem with. Please don't let that stand in the way of doing the right thing. We really need this ordinance. We need it for people, we need it for the animals. And I am on the Board of Directors for SNAP Association, which is run by Dr. Whaley out of Notre Dame, it's by the pre-Bet students at Notre Dame, and people of low income to modern income can apply for financial assistance to have their cats or dogs spayed. We sometimes pay for 100%, we ask for them to make a contribution, some of them make a dollar, some make $50. They've also just recently applied for and received a grant where a cat can be spayed for $10, no income requirements for the family. That's on their website, you can pull up a brochure. And this is because pet food companies are also realizing that cats are overrunning the country. We really need to get it under control. And I will say, I saw a recent article where New Zealand tried to kill all the cats, they had the barns come back, they had rats, they had mice. There's a reason our forefathers brought cats into the barns, and it needs to coexist, but we must not let it get out of hand. Spaying and neutering does work, and as I said, if you have one minor objection, maybe it's a major in your mind, please don't let one objection keep you from doing the right thing for South Bend. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, those who would like to speak in opposition, to this bill, please come forth, state your name and address, and share your thoughts. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. At this time, we will go-- I started to my right, this time I will start to my left, so we will go down to have final comments regarding this bill. Starting with Councilwoman White.
As I said during the committee meeting, I really appreciate the communication and transparency that Congresswoman Shay gave to this field and this important issue for our community. Would like to thank all the citizens for your input, the committee, it started over a year ago, we looked at a number of readings that the committee held, and also in terms of readings within the community, using the media to make sure that citizens were, one, made abreast, two, invited to share their viewpoints, their concerns, or even their disagreements. This has been a great process in terms of bringing forth a public policy that has been given to the community and to allow the community to have their input, and to ask questions, and to address issues. Again, I really would want to acknowledge all the hard work of all of those on the committee, our council attorney, and anyone that has really led any type of support, energy, and research to bring forth third substitute bill, 1714, after the meeting. Thank you.
Councilman Gav.
Sure, I'll just reiterate Karen's comments, I'll say thank you to Val, I think it was a really good process, and congrats on all your hard work. Also want to recognize Dr. Brillick, I think he has potentially an objection or two still, but just say he put a lot of time in to making improvements, and I think a lot of the amendments that make this bill a lot better are due to a lot of his hard work, so I'll say thank you to him as well.
Councilman Dr. Dave, I guess mine will be in the form of a question which can be answered later, but it would be simply this, any event that this is adopted, just a practical perspective, what can you do for Smokey at that point?
Well, Smokey is tethered, so--
Yeah, when does this take, in that circumstance?
If this passes, and there's-- well, there's a 60-day window that we have to ramp up, but-- and Kathy, may I ask, so with the 60-day ramp-up period, mass officers can't impose the anti-tethering regulations tomorrow, can they?
No, the effective date is currently proposed as August 1st, so the regulations without the exception of the enterprise party--
Can we try it?
So, Dr. Briner, I guess to answer your question, unfortunately, the anti-tethering regulations wouldn't so an effect--
I'd like to say if the administration believes that the ramp-up period is not necessary, the amendments would have been more recently, July 1st, so that there is an educational process that is necessary.
Matt, please, if you choose.
I would definitely suggest still keeping the process. A lot of the details I was unaware of with this specific instance, there is a lot of it, right? In fact, I was only made aware of this specific situation--
Smokey, not the bill.
Yes, it's Smokey.
Smokey!
Smokey's a dog. There are a few other things that could exist in this instance, and there are a few more state laws as well, so that's another important thing. There's some state laws that are being--
And there are some state laws that could affect the animal's condition.
Okay, go ahead, Ford.
Right.
Hey, Dr. Briner has another follow-up question?
Actually, this is informational, and what I want to convey to all those of you out there who will, if this is adopted, leave tonight very satisfied and enthused, I will tell you that this only goes and works as long as it's enforced, and going forward, the enforcement lies with the city, not the council, because we are not authorized or granted the authority to enforce regulations. We can fund them when necessary, we can encourage them, but encouragement and support going forward in support of this is as important as any activity this evening. So I hope you are willing to be participatory well into the future, if you want to see this successful.
Dr. Dave, I may say that poor Matt can't get away from-- we've got several citizen advocates here that will make sure that Matt is enforcing this.
I wasn't sure--
I'm not ready to say any names, but I am--
All righty. So, Dr. Fred Forlitt, come.
I hope I don't have a target in my back, but I'd just like to raise a few--
A few, I'll speed over.
It's just a point, I've given you a nasty point. I had a number of physicians that had volunteered to come tonight and talk about some certain issues, especially freed-specific legislation. I'd gone down that route before with other issues, it didn't seem to help, so that's why I didn't actually rally the troops. But I do have to say that I appreciate Valerie's efforts, I think she's done a good ordinance. Our dog bite reports will go up because Matt and Valerie will make sure that we enforce the laws. So it's going to be counterintuitive two years from now when you hear about we're worse, but we're actually enforcing the laws, we're going to be better. So that kind of answers Gavin's question also. I appreciate their efforts on spaying and neutering and tethering. Obviously, the whole situation is multifactorial. I would obviously vote for this bill, but I'm going to offer two amendments or two resolutions, and hopefully one of them is a compromise, or maybe both of them are compromised. I don't think that pit bulls, we're talking about breed-specific legislation now, I don't have to tell you anymore about it, you know more about it than probably anybody, but pit bulls should not have any higher euthanasia rate than any other type of dog. We all agree with that. The problem is, pit bulls were raised by bad people. They've been bred by bad people since 18th-century England to be fighting dogs. That's the problem. You people aren't the problem, I understand that, but pit bulls have been bred by bad people, and that's where they get the bad rap. So all I'm asking for, as a-- that's where they get the bad rap. So all I'm asking for, as a compromise, and I've talked to a number of you out there about this, I've treated a number of you out there, is that we muzzle, we have a muzzle and a fence, resolution or ordinance or law, whatever you want to say, about pit bulls. And the reason I say that, I think when you walk a pit bull, you should have a muzzle. I think in the long run, if a person can go up to a pit bull with a muzzle and pet the dog, they'll be a lot safer, and you'll get farther ahead down the road than if you don't muzzle. But anyway, the reason I think they should be muzzled is also from a public health standpoint. There are 700 cities, as you know, over 30 countries that ban pit bulls, England where they came from, France, Canada. But we don't need to go into those facts. There are 700 cities in the United States, Denver being one of them. Once they start enforcing the law, of course, they had worse statistics as we're going to have. So some of the facts that I think need to be told because of pit bulls being bred by bad people is that 50% of hospital admissions are because of a pit bull type three. This is admissions. It's, if I just finish, 6,000 hospitalizations last two years ago at the cost of $1 billion. 50% of deaths in this country, there's 30 to 40 deaths in this country due to dogs, all types of dogs. I understand that. But 50% of them were due to pit bull type breeds, okay? Now, these are facts taken out of the Journal of Classic Reconstructive Surgery, the American Journal of Forensic Medicine, the Annals of Surgery. I can get on the line here. But the point is that it is multifactorial, but genetics plays a big role in it. Of course, if you chain a dog, they're going to be three times more likely to attack or bite you. If you abuse a dog, I feel very badly for a policewoman out there that she had to live and she had to endure that kind of relationship and that kind of animal behavior. And I could come up here and show you slides from Memorial ER all night about dog bites and tearing off arms. I've personally been involved in a number of surgeries with dogs, but I'm not going to do that. That's not appropriate at this level. But the point is that we're always going to have this genetics versus environment argument, right? Nature versus nurture. But the point is that bad people have bred certain dogs to be, have a bad influence. So I would ask, I'm going to vote for this ordinance tonight, but I'm going to ask for a resolution or amendment in the next three to four weeks, or six weeks, or whatever our council attorney says is the timeline, to consider a fence and a muzzle. And we work towards having no more higher rate of euthanasia for pit bulls than for golden retrievers, which I have, which Valerie's met. The second proposal would be that, on the animal shelter, I have complete confidence that under Matt's leadership, we'll start becoming revenue-producing. As you know, two years ago, before I was on the council, before many of the members were on the council here, Henry and Oliver, Ron and Dave, and Karen, but we were told by the administration that our new animal shelter would cost $450,000 a year, okay? Last year's expenditures, these are economic facts, $700,000, okay? And Matt's well aware of this, okay? Mishawaka pays the Humane Society, which I know is persona non grata here, pays him $160,000 a year. She got $160,000 versus $700,000. So what I would propose, and I think Matt is very capable of this, is over the next eight years, we become revenue-neutral. As Valerie pointed out, only 3% of our dogs are licensed in the city, so we get no licensing fees. So we can't keep on running in the deficit. So I would propose every two years, Matt improve his revenue stream by 25%. So by 2016, he'd be 25% better off than we are today. 2018, 50%, 2020, 75, and by 2022, you can be revenue-neutral. So you spend what you take in, or you at least approach it. I think that's a long-term goal that we can all agree on, so that taxpayer says, hey, animal people like me are good people. They're responsible people. They want their tax dollars to be spent wisely. So I congratulate you for your enthusiasm on a very important subject. Like I say, I've had dogs all my life. But I would ask that you consider a compromise, and I think overall it's going to be good if we can approach those two things, a fencing and a muzzle requirement, and also that we become revenue-neutral by 2022. Thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate each and every one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Henry Davis.
I just thought that it was a very audacious, daunting task that you took upon yourself. And from the outset, I told you I was in favor of it because of what you've taken care of when it even got, congratulations. I hope if this passes, I said I was signed on as a co-sponsor. And so you all naturally have my vote and my support. But again, thank you for the research. Thank you for the commitment to our animals and also to our families and to South Bend. So, good job.
Thank you.
Councilman Jim Scott. And I want to thank Councilmember Shay as well. You pretty much told me on the very first committee meeting when you gave the example of what a shelter should be defined as versus what we have in our bill before. Clear and concise definitions are key for anybody within the city to do any type of enforcement work. And that was absolutely wonderful. I want to thank you. I want to thank all the council members that gave their input, the citizens, the city, and that with Crystal Briscoe on this as well, God hurry to it, and Matt, and make sure this is enforceable. And Dr. Varner's right. It has to be enforced, and I think it will be. I also want to thank Dr. Marad Coby and Linda Chandler. I played a very little small part in helping write a section. It was great working with them. I appreciate all their efforts. You know, TNR, I truly believe in that, and that little animal shelter at our house, basically a wall out there. So I need someone to come by and help track cats. Our birds and our ducks are inviting a lot of them in. The other thing that's good about this law is I think it helps take the next step in enforcement and working with the police department to go after the dogfighting rings that we haven't stopped then. That's truly key. And I'm also for some type of revenue-neutral program for everything within the city. It would be great if we could reduce all our revenue, but I don't think that's quite possible. The other thing is, if everybody was good, responsible pet owners, Matt would be out of business. So I think that's key. I think education, just the great, wonderful people involved with this. It was amazing to see so many different advocacy groups come together on this, and good job on that, Val, in leading this. But what has also set up in South Bend is a culture that these groups can work with the Animal Care and Control to help change the results in the animals around here, in that, you know, timing is everything. And I know a long time ago when I got elected that, you know, we wanted to stop some of this and get dogs and cats to rescues. In fact, here's a little guy that my wife just picked up and it was parked your way, Matt. And, you know, I talked to some people about the dog on Scott Street back, and Matt and I talked about this too, what can we have done? I mean, it was minus 40 degrees, and this dog was out there. And it was just a shame for me to talk to the citizens that live over on Scott Street, because this is right, I mean, I can walk from my house to where this dog is, and to sit there and say, there's nothing we can do because this is the law. And, you know, you can't go break for that because you think it's something bad at this point. You know, the good thing is Matt and his crew were out there checking on the dog, even though the owner probably wouldn't be in this room today. But timing is everything, and you feel bad for all the animals that did not, you know, won't make it till the 60 days, you know, that comes along. But we can do the best that we can and then save the starfish and the dogs and the cats going forward. So if you can't tell them in favor of this, so, good job.
Councilman, Councilwoman Shay.
I fully support.
Any other comments on this side?
I would just like to say, when I was going around on Calvert Street to look at the flooding situation, I ran into a home where a neighbor had two pit bulls. And when I knocked on the door and the pit bull was there, I jumped back. And she said, no, this is a friendly dog. I said a friendly dog because of the fact that my thoughts about pit bulls were pretty negative. And I would agree that, in my opinion, before I met this dog, I would agree that they needed to be muzzled and fenced all around and everything else. And she said, no, this is a nice dog. And I helped back, and finally I came into the house and pet it. And I'm like, okay, this is real crazy. I was trying not to show that I was scared. And so I went, and that dog was the friendliest dog I've ever seen. It was a pit bull. And I had never seen a pit bull like that. And it really helped me, as I was going through this whole process over the last year, to think about how that owner helped raise that dog correctly. And the fact that here I was, and we were just playing with it, and everything else was running around, took a look at the basement. And being on that street again today, if we put the ribbon on that street, it helped remind me again of that dog and how friendly that dog is. And so I would go and pet that dog without a muzzle.
What's the pledge of this committee?
Move for favorable recommendations.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same side. It is carried.
Council Attorney Zakansky, if you could just share with the council, so now we meet as a whole and take a vote. If you all would like, we will now adjourn as a committee of the whole and vote on this vote.
All right, will you come on up?
Just can't wait.
Don't read yet. You can deliver. Do we got it?
Look, I was back in session, and we would like for, could you please read the amended third version of Bill 1714 as amended, something like that?
Council, in South Bend, Indiana, pending Chapter 5 of the South Bend Municipal Code in its entirety, when replacing it with a new Chapter 5 entitled Responsible Animal and Pet Ownership, Care, and Control Regulation, and amending Section 2-213 of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing schedule of ordnance and code violations.
Motion to amend this...
So, second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same side. It is carried.
Now make a motion to adopt Third Substitute, such that this pass, pass Third Substitute as Bill 1714 as amended.
Second.
Mr. Roy, would you please step aside?
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye. Yai yai.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Davis?
Aye.
Eight aye.
That is great. All right. Now, could you please read Resolution 1457? Oh, the bill's passed, sorry. Now, I want to start with the resolution. We've got some good stuff coming out. Okay, we give you a chance to re-write and then we'll head on up. You want to just take a five minutes? Okay, say aye. Okay, five-minute recess.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay. Could you please read Bill Number 1457, which is a confirming resolution?
1457, a resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designated certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 525 East Colfax Avenue, as an economic revitalization area for purchase of an anteater real property tax evasion for Colfax Hill Partners LLC.
Thank you. Can we have representatives state your name and address and a brief synopsis? Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Rick Steele from Bonson Bonberg at 100 North Michigan Street here in South Bend. I'm pleased to join Ms. Aubrey Saratsky, the owner of Colfax Hill Partners, to seek your support for this resolution tonight. As the council knows, this is a request for an eight-year real property tax evasion on construction of a new multi-use project on Northwest Corner Village in Colfax. So, based floor retail with approximately 13 units above the total project cost is going to be in excess of $3 million, and this will add some fatality and density for the East Bank Village. I appreciate your support and happy to answer your questions.
Is there any questions for the attorney? Seeing none, questions? Okay. Those in the public who would like to speak in favor of this, please come forth. Please state your name, address, and a brief comment.
I'm neither speaking in favor nor against at this point. I would expect the petitioners to show public specifically what they're hoping to do. If there's a writer, we'd like to see it.
If there's a what? Do you like to see a writer? Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else? Those who would like to speak in opposition, please come forth. Seeing none, would you like to then share back to, even though that was really done under the approval section?
Sure, Mr. Davis. Certainly, the developer has worked for redevelopment, permission to share some renderings, some of which are at the early stage renderings in the South Bend Tribune. But I am certain that Ms. Saratsky would be happy to meet with members of the public and share more current designs as they stand on.
Okay, thank you. Moving back to the fortune of the council and close up the public hearing.
Move for the adoption of 1457?
Second.
Mr. Roy.
Mr. Henry Davis?
1457?
I'm aware of that. I'm just a little conflicted because that was a question that was out there earlier. How do we approve something that we don't know we're actually approving?
and, you know, the, the, uh, we, we.
Oh, yeah, that was, um. Okay, cool. Thank you. All right. Um, Mr. Roy, could you read Bill number 1458?
A resolution waiving the required filing date of May 10th, 2015, an acceptance of the deduction application of the late filing of deduction application for new manufacturing equipment located in an economic revitalization area filed under Resolutional 4198-12 for the tire rack located at 7101 Ford Parkway.
We have a committee review sort on community investment. Uh, Councilman Ford?
Yep. Community investment sends us far favorably.
Thank you. Uh, positor, please give us his name and a brief synopsis and his address.
President Davis of the council members. My name is Jill Lyons, I'm a resident of South Bend, Chief Regional Officer for Tire Row, 7101 Ford Parkway, South Bend, Indiana. Here to request, also without, here to request, uh, untimely filing of 322 RE relative to Resolution 4198-12. Would want to make a comment that we have timely filed the SB1, properly filed, also any CF ones that were listed for project were timely filed. Uh, we met, they exceeded all the capital expenditure projects, project cost, building with the project, as well as any of the job creation rules that exceeded this one at this point. Uh, so, very brief question consideration for favorable way.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yes, will this be annual filing you'll need to make?
Uh, no, 322, the CF1 does, we, we hold it filed as timely.
So this just deals with the per initial assessment that had, uh, uh, okay, all right.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, we move to the public. Those who like to speak in favor, please come forth. Those who like to speak in opposition, please do likewise. Public hearing is now closed, what was the council's pleasure?
Move for the adoption of 1458.
Second. Mr. Roy, would you please step through?
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Uh, President Davis?
Aye.
Uh, President Davis of the council members.
Uh, my name is Jill Lyons, I'm a resident of South Bend, Chief Regional Officer for Tire Row, 7101 Ford Parkway, South Bend, Indiana. Here to request, also without, here to request, uh, untimely filing of 322 RE relative to Resolution 4198-12. Would want to make a comment that we have timely filed the SB1, properly filed, also any CF ones that were listed for project were timely filed. Uh, we met, they exceeded all the capital expenditure projects, project cost, building with the project, as well as any of the job creation rules that exceeded this one at this point. Uh, so, very brief question consideration for favorable way.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yes, will this be annual filing you'll need to make?
Uh, no, 322, the CF1 does, we, we hold it filed as timely.
Okay. So this just deals with the per initial assessment that had, uh, uh, okay, all right.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, we move to the public. Those who like to speak in favor, please come forth. Those who like to speak in opposition, please do likewise. Public hearing is now closed, what was the council's pleasure?
Move for the adoption of 1458.
Second. Mr. Roy, would you please take the row?
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
Uh, President Davis?
Aye.
That would be seven aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. All right, Mr. Roy, would you please read, um, Bill 1460?
A resolution of the county council of the city of South Bend, designated certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 914, 918, 923, 925, 927, 930, 932 and a half, 1024, 1030, Oak Street, 922, 930, 1002 and a half, 1014, 1018, 1020, Furbury, 417, 418, 500 Block of Sherman, 501 Harrison Street, 423, 429, 431 Cottage Road, 327, 329, 331, 408, 412, 417, 403, Pushing Street, as residentially distressed areas for purposes of a five-year residential real property tax abatement for Lincoln Park Development LLC.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin Furley, could you please give us an report from community investment?
Community investment sends us far favorably.
Thank you. Now, our positor, would you please come forth, state your name and address, and give us a brief synopsis of your proposal.
Hi, my name is Anne Mannix, my address is 724 West Washington. Uh, we propose to build 24 three-family homes. They will be affordable, they'll be managed by a housing cooperative, the total project costs are 4.7 million. Uh, we're applying for funding and we expect to hear on August 22nd.
Okay, thank you. Questions from this minute? All right, thank you. If there's a time, we open it to public hearing. Those in the public who like to speak in favor, please come forth, state your name and address, and share your thoughts. Those in opposition, please do likewise. Public hearing is now closed. Counsel?
Move for the adoption of 1460.
Second. Mr. Roy, would you please take the row?
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Furley?
Aye.
And President Davis?
Aye.
Resolution seven aye. Thank you, that passes. Um, moving to unfinished business, um, what is your pleasure regarding Bill 1459, 2714, Bill 2814, and Bill 3014?
I move that all four said bills, uh, both of the zoning act, thanks you.
What date?
For second, third, reading, uh, public hearing, this is the date.
23.
23.
23, 2014, thank you.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. It is now carried. Under new business, under, um, rules for our rules, and, um, rules committee, we talked about, um, another meeting, the timeline, um, everything we talked about today?
Um, I'd like to suggest either Tuesday or Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday next week, um, at 5:30. I would anticipate it would go no longer than, or, uh, this is my first go at it, so if that doesn't work, I'll look at something else. Tuesday. Wednesday or Thursday, which date would work best?
Tuesday, 5:30?
Okay, committee members first.
Council rules?
Yeah, Tuesday, 5:30?
Let me press my beep timer.
I think Tuesday, 5:30. Boy, you're smart. If we can have four of them, if we can have three, come on, rules members there, um, if we can conduct the meeting, anyone else would be welcome to attend, uh, this committee. It'll be a continuation of the, uh, executive session, which we, uh, we didn't adjourn it, we, uh, when we, uh, okay, Tuesday.
Tuesday, 5:30?
Uh, that's fine, 5:30.
All right. The rule tonight set the next rules committee meeting in executive session.
To continuation.
As, as, from the continuation of today, in the, uh, in the, the executive session.
Okay.
Uh, Tuesday, that would be 6:09, I believe, at 5:30 PM, would, uh, the clerk's office see that notice goes, uh, I'm sorry.
5:30?
Yeah. Is it 6:09, right? 6:09 to date?
No, that was 6:03.
6:02, okay.